Good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon. Welcome to the April 23rd edition of Your NAACP Speaks. And I am, as always, your host, Kalim Shabazz, President of the Atlantic City Branch of the NAACP. And we welcome you to the April 23rd edition of Your NAACP Speaks. We heard here every Tuesday from 4:30 to 5:30 on WEHA, 88.7 and 100.3 FM. As we do every week, we want to send a shout out to the owner, the founder, and the president of WEHA Radio, William Hawks, and his lovely wife, First Lady Hawks. We are honored and honored to be here on this afternoon. We're going to have, as always, our regular contributor, Aaron Sporty Randolph, President of the Lang City Council and Representative of the First Ward in the City of Atlantic City, for his regular contribution. We're also expecting Alexander Bland, who is our young adult representative and also a registered nurse, to talk about some health issues and concerns. And we're having a new feature today. We are happy to announce and proud to announce a new media partner, Ideal Institute, the talented and the experienced and respected Rajeev, who is going to be filming, so we can expand our reach in the NAACP. Our goal is to make sure that you know what the NAACP is doing, our programs, our priorities, and the things that we are doing to advance civil rights and social justice for everyone. This is the last Tuesday before the Anniversary Freedom Fund Gala, which is going to be this Saturday, April 27th. This Saturday, April 27th, at Hard Rock. Doors are going to open at 6:00 and the program is going to start promptly at 7:00 PM. Some people were asking me, will say, "President Shabazz, we can't make the gala unfortunately because people are traveling and have other things that they're doing. How can we participate?" So I told them, "Mr. President, that they can still send a contribution to PO Box 1182, PO Box 1182, Habskeken, New Jersey, 08201." That's the Atlantic City NAACP Post Office box. They can send a check to us in the amount that they're comfortable with, and we will acknowledge it, of course, and we appreciate their contribution, whatever they feel comfortable donating. Please don't send money cash in the mail. We have to tell people not to do that. Don't send cash in the mail. But if you want to send a contribution to support the efforts of the Atlantic City Branch of the NAACP and to support the 50th anniversary of our Freedom Fund, we would be more than happy to receive that, and you can do that. I just brought in a clipping from the Saturday, April 6th edition of The Press. And it says, the headline, I won't read the whole article, but it says, "Groups Bring Limited Run Duvernay Film to Regal." And what this is about, the NAACP, along with some other groups in the area, the Atlantic City Chapter of the Links, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, we combined to take youngsters to the Regal Theater to see this film called "Origin." And this film dealt with systems of racism and segregation here in this country by Ava DuVernay, who was an outstanding filmmaker in this country. And this is some of the things that we do with the contributions that we receive from the Freedom Fund for our youth council. We took 20 youngsters from the youth council in Atlantic City to that film. Let me make two more announcements before we turn to the council president for his input. On May 13th, which is the regular meeting of the NAACP, second Monday in the month, we invite you to come and hear Tim Alexander. Tim Alexander is a civil rights lawyer, and the topic that he's going to talk about at that meeting at 7:00 PM at ACCC, which is in 1535 Backrack Boulevard in Atlantic City, he's going to talk about the constitutionality, the constitutionality of Senator Palistino's plan to overturn the Atlantic City government. Very important topic. I think that there is no better person to talk about this than Tim Alexander, who is a civil rights lawyer. We feel very strongly, we, the NAACP, that what the senator has proposed is a violation of civil rights. And Tim Alexander, who is a practicing attorney with a firm in Salem, will be talking about that. That's going to be Monday, May 13th, at 7:00 PM at Atlantic Cape Community College Room 204, 1535 Backrack Boulevard. We'll be talking about that more as we come closer to that, but we wanted to invite you all there so you can hear from someone who is versed in civil rights and a lawyer why this plan, this scheme, this plot is a violation of civil rights and something that we feel very strongly against, and we're going to organize and make sure that it does not see the light of day. Council President, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon to your listening audience out there. Glad to be here today. First of all, I'm looking forward to Saturday. It's the 50th. The 50th, and that's a big number, you know? And I'm glad to be a part of that, so I'm really looking forward to Saturday. I bought two tuxedos. I don't know which one I'm going to wear, but I'm going to be sharp. But, you know, times of the essence. You know, June is right around the corner. That's the primary, and November will be here before you know it. And you know what I'm going to talk about? Your right to vote. We have a right, we have a duty, and we should choose to vote. I'm trying to convince you, if you think that you want to sit on the couch, that's not the place to be. This election coming up in November is humongous. You see how the Congress is fighting? They just passed a bill to give aid to the Ukraine, aid to Israel and Taiwan. But look how long it took. You know, our country's in the uproar. We're divided, even at our Congress. We need to get out and vote. We can get rid of some of these people if we get out and vote. If you're dissatisfied with the people that are representing you in your district or in your area, you get out and vote. I saw an interesting, very interesting interview with John Legend, which I'm a big John Legend fan. I go see him all the time, whenever he's in the city. I try to go see him. I haven't seen him in a while, but when he comes back, I will. And he did an excellent piece on CNN. And you know, if you, you can always run it back on, but he did a very interesting interview on Number 45. He told it exactly like it was. So if you're listening to audiences there, it was on Sunday. You can always get a repeat, you could always run it back. But look at what John, here's an entertainer. Who couldn't, you know, say, "I don't have to do that. I have money, I have fame, I don't need to be involved." He's involved, and he's involved to the point that he's out there. He knows his candidate, he knows the issues. He talked about 45, what 45 stood for, from back in the 60s, when they were discriminating against people of color. He talked about the whole scenario of why we should get out and not vote for 45. So I'm not John Legend, I'm a fan of John Legend. I like his music, but I really liked his political view. So please, it was on Sunday, it was a tremendous, they gave him a lot of time. It was a tremendous interview. And he laid it out for people of color on why we should not vote for 45. So when you could take a major person in the industry that could lose everything or have nothing to lose, and he took the have nothing to lose route and the state how he felt. He's involved, not like some people who I've read, I won't mention this athlete's name. He said he's taking the powder. He's going to let people choose. And I'm, you know, I'm a admirer of sports, but when you don't have a view and you have a platform, sometimes I have a tendency to look at you side-eyed. You know, we have a platform right here, this radio station. We don't endorse candidates, but we do tell people to go out and vote. And the reason why? Because people died for us to be able to vote. You know, you talk about "Origin." I want to go see that, too. I definitely want to go see that. You know, we just look at how our society is set up right now. You know, The Proud Boys was at an event the other day. I mean, they're going to presidential events. That sends out a bad signal. It sends out a bad signal, and people are not talking about it. You have this vast majority of people that's living in a vacuum. They don't see what's going on. I mean, common sense shows you that when you start wanting to take books away from children, when you want to start banning different things for people of color, that tells you where they stand, and they're doing it right in front of us. They're doing it in front of our face. I've looked at some of the numbers. The numbers are starting to look real favorable, especially with the independent voters. You know, you know, we have a two-party system, but you look at who you're running, who's running, and you look at the issues, and you'll know why you should not take it for granted that your vote don't count. Your vote does count. I'll say it again, you need to get out, you need to talk to people, you need to let them know, "Listen, I'm going to vote, and I want you to go with me. And let's bring some family, let's bring some friends, let's bring some neighbors, and some people where we might have some disagreements. Let's put our disagreements aside and go out and vote." I'm not telling you who to vote for, but I'm telling you, if you look at the issues, you'll know who to vote for. You'll know who's in your favor and you know who's not in your favor. So it's crucial. It's other people that have taken positions are, I'm not, I became a, this young lady, she's real perry, what's her name, the singer? She's going with Jason Kelsey, what's her? Taylor Swift. She took her position a long time ago. She did, she really did. So you got to give her props, because these are people that, they got platforms. And she took her position a long time ago, and she's gotten, I don't know how many thousands of people to vote, that, because they follow her. They might not be following the candidate so much, but it doesn't make a difference. As long as you get out and vote, cast your vote. Democracy is a big word, and it's hanging by a thread, which is very tiny. And when we say that, people look at us like, "Oh, everything's all right." No, everything's not all right. It's not all right. So you need to get out and vote. You really need to know the issues if you don't ask somebody. No question is a dumb question. And if anybody asks, "You didn't know that?" You say, "That's why I asked you." And now I know that you don't know it, so let's both go find somebody that knows the answer. You know what I mean? We need to get out, we need to know the issues. We know, we need to reason, know why we're voting, the reason why we vote, and the most important thing, is people die. I went down to Atlanta a few years ago, and I went to Dr. Martin Luther King's memorial. Part of the reasons why he was assassinated was because of our voting rights. Okay? Mary Edgar, you can go down the line of people that literally, literally laid their life on the line and died for us to be able to vote. And it's an insult, and it's very disrespectful to them that we have an opportunity to make things somewhat right. Nothing's perfect, and because we have another candidate, I'm not trying to put him higher than the other one. But I don't like to say the lesser two evils, but I like to say the better candidate is the one that we should go for, and we should know why we're voting for them. I'm not trying to convince people, but look and listen to what's going on. You got a guy, Number 45, he's, "I'm coming at you again." He's got 91, he's in court four days a week. He's in court for, it's on television. I mean, I look at, you know, I'm a political junkie anyway, so I look at these things. But this guy is actually running, and he's in court four days a week, and he said, "Man, you're stopping me from campaigning." But he's using that as a prop, too. He's using that as a prop, too. All it is about him, and it's not about America. And Marjorie Taylor Greene, she's in, going to Russia, or she's in Russia. So what is happening with our political cycle? We see it, I know other people see it. What's going to happen? November will tell a story. So I will preach, I will plead. I don't like begging, but I'm at that point now, I'm begging you to get out and vote. But I'm not only begging you to get out and vote, but do it for the right reasons. Just remember, when people lay their life on the line, our ancestors, we built this country. I don't care if they want to erase black history, that's, you know what? Because that's part of our history. They don't want to talk about slavery, but that's part of this country's history. You know, they don't want to talk about it? That is part of their history. And so we have to look at it from that angle. We have to look at it thoroughly. We need to get out there, we need to do what we need to do, and come November, we should be victorious. I like the fact that you and I will be going down in September, right before the election. We will be in DC at the Black Caucus, we go every year, and it's going to be hot, and it's going to be heavy. Might be a couple of fights, you know, they fight on the floor, you know what I mean? But we need to be able to participate in that kind of stuff. Those that can't, we'll bring the information back to you, because we don't go down there to party. We go down there for the basics. The basic fundamentals, the right for us to vote, know the issues. I'm glad to be here today. I'm sweating a little bit. You know, I usually had my other gear on, but they said we were on TV, so I, you know, put my jacket on, you know, little shirt, you know, so, you know? But I'm still the same guy. I'm still the same guy. If you run into, and people have stopped me on the street, saying, "Man, we hear you on the radio, man. I'm glad to hear that, I'm glad you talk about voting." And I asked them, "Are you going to vote?" And a lot of them stayed the artist here, and I'm holding them to it. One guy showed me his car, voter registration car. He actually went and, because I talk about it in the barber shop. I don't have that much here, but I'm always in the barber shop, you know what I mean? Go there once a week, get my beard trimmed, my hair, you know, my doo. So I talk about it on the job, everybody on my job is ready. You know what I mean? I talk about it wherever, in church, you know? Wherever I get a chance to speak about getting out to vote, you know? And I'm not the only one, other people are, too. It's just that I got a little platform on Tuesdays at 4:30, where I get a chance to voice what we need to do. So I'm glad to be here today. I'm glad that we're doing another livestream today. And I'm glad to see my man Christian over here, and I'll be back. Thank you.
For those of you who just tuned in or are not regular listeners, that is our regular contributor, Council President Aaron Sporty Randolph from the great city of Atlantic City, also the representative of the First Ward in the city of Atlantic City, talking about his favorite topic, our favorite topic, voter registration, voter education, voter awareness. And as he said, the Atlantic City NAACP, in fact, all the NACPs, we do not endorse candidates. We do encourage people to vote, and we are planning now, as we speak, our Candidates Night, which will be held at Martin Luther King Complex, and it'll also be held live on WEHA, so people can actually see the candidates, hear the candidates from themselves, and make their own decision as to who to vote for. But the most important thing is to vote. The primary election in New Jersey is June the 4th. The deadline to register to vote for the primary is May 14th. May 14th is the deadline to register for the primary. You talked about democracy, Mr. President. Let me just say that the theme for the Freedom Fund this Saturday is protecting, I'm sorry, is standing for and protecting democracy. Standing for and protecting democracy. And when we chose that theme several months ago, people thought it was just theoretical or conceptual theme. But here we are today, right here in Atlantic County, and we have the highest elected official in Atlantic County who has presented a plan to take over Atlantic City government and remove elected officials and put people he wanted as appointees, which is a threat to democracy. So we're going to talk about that. Guy will end on Saturday in my remarks, and we'll expand on that. But thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned in the start of our broadcast today, we have a new feature here. Our good friends from Ideal Institute are going to be partnering with us so that we expand our broad with in terms of getting the message of the NAACP, what we're doing. And we are so happy to have the very talented, the very lovely Rajeev, who is filming that. And we also welcome another special guest, who really, he should be almost a regular contributor, too. He is here so much, but it's important. Kristin Raglin, who is the Associate Vice President, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion in Atlantic Care. And I was blessed to be at a stakeholders meeting that Kristin had on health equity, and as always, she did an excellent job, a very, very needed subject. And I think, Kristin, I know you've got a busy schedule, but we like to put you in regularly for health equity and healthcare. We need to keep talking about that. And like I said at the meeting, Atlantic Care is a leading industry in this area. And I think it's so important and so key that Atlantic Care underscores and stays with the diversity, equity, and inclusion when diversity, equity, and inclusion is under attack all over this country. So before we let you get into whatever subject you want to, tell the audience why it's important for diversity, equity, and inclusion to be in the workplace.
Well, absolutely. Well, first, as always, thank you for having me here. And I would love to be a regular contributor, as long as you find me relevant, I'll stay. But you know, I want to start with diversity, equity, and inclusion benefits everyone. It's not benefiting just particular groups of people. There is an analogy or any amount there that says that diversity invites people to the party, but inclusion allows them to dance. And I think when we look at diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's making sure that our friends and colleagues, who we may not have the same political affiliations, but we still value each other, because we also know iron sharpens iron, and we also know that differences bring opportunities and innovation. And so with that being said, DEI is not just to benefit those who we deem necessary, but it benefits everyone in that regard. And so DEI is something that I'm passionate about, but I'm also passionate about doing it the correct way. And I do think that it's important, just as much as I say how important it is to our community and society, but I think it's just as important as a gatekeeper for DEI to say that there are some actors out there who call themselves practitioners of DEI, who are more divisive than anything. And so we have to make sure that when we look at issues, particularly around health equity, whether it's maternal fetal medicine, or infant mortality, or black maternal health, or if it's hypertension, diabetes, that we are bringing in every voice so that we can get to the final solution versus a tattered solution. And so I'm always going to ring the DEI bell. It was actually when you was mentioning Megya Evers. One of the, of course, I never had the opportunity to meet Megya Evers, but when I was in college, one of the awards that I received by our chapter, NAACP chapter, was the Megya Evers Political Action Award. And what really comes to mind is the movie, I think it was called, what was the movie that they did on Megya Evers with Whoopi Goldberg? Mississippi Burnings. And that scene with his children coming out to see him in that state after he had gotten shot, that is something that burns in my memory bank as someone who has children myself at that age. And I always say when I wake up that my job is to make this society a better place for them. Hopefully, I don't have to make the ultimate sacrifice to do it, but there were people who did it for us, and we really shouldn't have to repeat that. We should really be able to navigate and leverage and build upon it. So, which is my, one of these days we can have, I would love to bring my Booker T. Washington, W.E.B. DuBois debate about that. But nonetheless, so I want to thank you, Councilman, for coming to our stakeholders meeting. As you mentioned, Atlantic Care is committed to health equity. Our CEO and President, Michael Charlton, laid out a robust vision recently, called Vision 2030, that's going to be looking at how we're going to impact not only the area, but the region. But I wanted to thank you for coming out. So what Councilman was talking about was, last week, we kicked off our first quarterly Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Stakeholders Event. This is an opportunity for our community leaders to come into a safe space, into an inclusive space, to share how we at Atlantic Care can be more culturally competent, more equitable, and more inclusive. And so we had a great turnout there. And then yesterday, some of you may remember a few months ago, I talked about how we at Atlantic Care competitively won an opportunity with Pfizer and the American Medical Group Association to study COVID-19 management. And so we had the American Medical Group Association with us yesterday to share some results, some data, and some opportunities. But more importantly, we had some community stakeholders who were able to come to this meeting and share their thoughts on COVID-19 and some of the data. So at the end of the day, health equity is a team sport. We need everyone. We need Democrats, Republicans, we need independents, we need everyone. And so I appreciate everyone who is putting their feet to the fire to make sure that our communities remain equitable, inclusive, and healthy.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for that and bringing us up to date. And you had said several months ago that these meetings were coming up, and now they're actually being implemented. And it's important that people know that, one, that you are there, and that you are not only there, but you are in a position of influence and impact, and you are doing that. And then, two, that you are supported by Atlantic Care. And then, three, as you said, the president has laid out a robust, realistic, ambitious plan that includes DEI going forward. I know one of the things we talked about yesterday at the meeting was the perception that the community has of healthcare institutions. And we got in a little bit about the history. Somebody mentioned, I think it might have been you, about the Tuskegee Project and how that impacts still today. How people of color feel about the medical apparatus in this country, because the medical apparatus, along with the government, was complicit in not only injecting African-Americans with syphilis, letting them go untreated, and more than that, not even telling them. Why should people in this area trust Atlantic Care?
Absolutely. Well, first, I want to say, I'm a part of an executive fellowship with the American Hospital Association. So I was in Chicago a couple of weeks ago when I met some people from Tuskegee, Alabama. And these were individuals who are doing the same work as I am doing. But they made a very clear point. They said they don't like that the national narrative is that the Tuskegee Experiment is connected to Tuskegee, Alabama, because it makes them feel that they live in a place that has a negative connotation. So it was interesting, because you know, we talked about it at all ends, about the Tuskegee Experiment, but there is a population of people who are saying, "Listen, we don't like when y'all call it the Tuskegee Experiment." So I had to change my language, but I thought that was fascinating. But Atlantic Care, as you, you know, to your question, I believe, I know in my heart of hearts, that Atlantic Care every day strives to do the right ethical thing, to make sure we create an inclusive environment. I think some of the data that we were sharing around our COVID-19 management studies showed and proved that people do trust the providers and practitioners. Now, do they understand some of the things, or all the things that their doctor or nurse is saying to them? Maybe not, but they trust the fact that their provider is going to give them what they need. But I think that there's a national trend that we need to aim for, that we need people, not just to trust Atlantic Care, but we need people to trust healthcare in general. Because, you know, my friend Sandy Festa always says, "Wealth is health." And, you know, there is no just mental health, there's just health. You know, it's not just behavioral health, there's health. It's not just physical health, it's just health. And we need to make sure that the totality of health in our community reigns supreme, that wherever they go, that the expectation of good health is, you know, the expectation. So yes, we may treat you well at Atlantic Care, but if you see something in another state, we need you to have the same vigor to say something about that as well. And so Atlantic Care, I believe, again, has done a lot to show commitment, whether that's, you know, our food pantry, our health plex, the federally qualified health center, whether it's the community outreach that we're doing, whether it's the leaders sitting on boards for our various community organizations. I feel that Atlantic Care is a stable, safe place, that people know that at the end of the day, our job is to take care of people.
Well, speaking of outreach and healthcare, I agree with you. May 4th, I think you're doing something with our good friend, Dr. Wallace, at the Boys and Girls Club. Tell us about.
Yes, I'm so glad you asked that, and I'm grateful to talk about that. So Dr. Wallace and his team had said to me, and you know, transparently, they said, "Hey, we want to do a wellness fair." And I said, "Well, listen, Doc, there's no wellness fair without Atlantic Care. So we're going to be a premier sponsor." And so I was able to, the office of DEI at Atlantic Care, we're financially and in-kind sponsoring this event in partnership with the club. And so May 4th, we're inviting all of you to join us from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Actually, I was, excuse me, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Boys and Girls Club of Atlantic City, Pennsylvania Avenue. We are having our medical doctors out there, we're having some nurses out there, some of our clinical team members, along with community partners. But the goal is not to just get out there, cook out, and give out hot dogs, but also provide the resources for people who may need access to their Medicaid or Medicare insurances, who may need access to a provider, who may need to talk to someone about their cancer screenings, who may just need to be in a safe space to talk about, maybe they want a job or something like that. So we are looking to make this an annual event as a community sponsor. And if I can be very transparent with you, Atlantic Care is your regional And if I can be very transparent with you, Atlantic Care is your regional superior choice in that we take care of everyone and we do it with great enthusiasm. So excited to partner with Dr. Wallace and.
That's a Saturday, isn't it?
That's a Saturday.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a rain or shine day, but I think we're going to, it's going to be rain or shine because we got a gym in there as well.
Right, right. It's a big facility. That's a 317, 217 Pennsylvania Avenue.
317 Pennsylvania Avenue.
In fact, that's the site of your defeat in baseball.
Wait, Wes.
You and my grandson.
Yeah, me and Emile, we couldn't make it. But it's funny, we've been practicing ever since. We're there every Thursday. Shout out to Dr. Wallace. One of the ways that I'm able to engage our residents, our medical doctors that are here. Every Thursday, Dr. Wallace gives us open gym from six to eight for our doctors to get in there and have a place to just kind of woo-sah and just kind of play. So we're there every Thursday practicing for the next go around. But I did check some birth certificates. Some of those kids shouldn't have been on the team that we play.
Well, I, I'll tell you the same thing I told my grandson. You guys can't beat those kids in the Boys and Girls Club.
We're going to get there. We're going to get there.
But shout out to our friend, Dr. Wallace and Atlantic Care. Kristen, this is going to be a great event, Community Wellness Fair. Can, can people, if they need healthcare information, can they get signed up or get referred?
Yes.
If they, I, I know, I know you said in the meeting yesterday that sometimes people Medicaid applications lapse.
Yes.
Can they get that kind of information in case that's their situation?
We're looking to have representatives on site for those Medicaid partners and any insurance partner that we get. But we will have people on site to help people navigate that journey. But going back to the Medicaid piece, what we noticed was that a lot of individuals were allowing their Medicaid to lapse because Medicaid is sending you paperwork in the mail. And in order for you to continue the coverage, you have to send it back. If you don't send it back in a timely manner, they can drop you or there's a lapse. And so what we don't want are people who have a lapse in coverage because of simple paperwork. And then that could, that lapse in coverage could mean a screening that could prevent you from a life or death situation. That lapse in coverage could mean your children being able to go to school, be able to get their physicals, things of that nature. So we want to make sure that community health education is the forefront of our community health outreach.
What's the cost for this event on May 4th?
It is free, $99. All right? So come please, join us free, get some food. I think Dr. Wallace has a bounty house as well, but it's free. Come get some free resources. And here's the thing, you may have everything all together, but you never know if you need this information for people who are in your community. That's the other thing. We have to teach, commission, license, deputize everyone to be everyone's advocate in health. If it's not for you, make sure your neighbor's good. Make sure your neighbor knows that at 45, you gotta get these screenings. Make sure your neighbors know that your children need a primary care provider when they turn 18. And so that we can begin to avoid those disparate things that happen, particularly to communities of color because of lack of education and awareness.
Okay, you've just been listening to Kristen Raglin, who was the associate, associate or assistant?
Assistant, assistant.
Vice President for Equity, Inclusion and Diversity, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion at Atlantic Care. And we thank you so much for coming on. Kristen, don't go anywhere. I just want people to know who you were. And also, we'll mention again, we are partnering with our good friends at Ideal Institute. They are filming and they're going to be filming as we go forward to help us expand our reach for the NAACP. And Kristen, we're going to put you on the same salary as the council president, which is zero.
Did you ever ask, did you ever ask, or maybe I can ask you, how do you feel about the government stepping in trying to get rid of DEI?
Uh, you know, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. I think it's, one, it's, in my mind, from a humanitarian standpoint, is out of place. But I also think that that's a call to action for my colleagues to say, why do they feel that it needs to be? And I think, if I could be very honest with you, because I have colleagues who I love to death.
What they believe in.
They, I will say this, you gotta know how to market your message too. You can't antagonize people and expect them to be an ally. You know, your boy, and I shouldn't say boy, but I know he calls you your boy, Reverend Buster.
Stories.
Stories. He said something that I thought, at the NAACP Breakfast Committee, he said, listen, don't be so black that you don't have no white friends.
That's what he said.
And I, I took, I take that to heart and not necessarily on the color of the person, but the people who may not be an ally at that moment, take time to educate them on that because.
But when you say educate, why do you have to educate someone on diversity, equity and inclusion? There's no, there's no education. That's a lack of either ignorance or this call playing out racism.
Absolutely. So I'll tell you why you have to educate. I'll tell you why. Because there are people who you don't, who it should be self-awareness and common sense. But imagine someone being taught their whole life that X, Y and Z is to happen. And then nobody corrects them. And so that's why we call it teachable moments, because we have to uncorrect the learning that you were given by someone who was wrong. I think about the, the 42 movie, Jackie Robinson. There was a scene where the young boy watched his dad use the N-word. Until Jackie gets on the field and his white teammate comes out and braces him. And that young boy's perception changes because he was taught in that moment that that's not, that's not okay. Because hey, someone who looks like me did the opposite when I was taught. So I do think there is moments for teachable lessons, but then there's common sense, right? I always say there's a difference between a mistake and a behavior. A mistake, I can teach you, but a behavior is your willingness to always.
And I think that's a lot with this DEI behavior, a lot of its behavior.
But he is with NAACP, and we take the position, NAACP takes the position that we have to constantly reach out and make people allies who may not be allies. Because if we were to turn the clock back, some people want to do, 20, 30, 40 years ago, people of color didn't have the right to vote and the right to be in careers that they wanted to and the right to even be where you at.
Yeah, absolutely.
In, in Atlantic Care, or the right to even have doctors of color have the ability to, to go to the hospital and actually admit patients. So the ability to reach out to people and not alienate them is very, very important.
You gotta watch out who you, you reach out to too, because remember, this now, we have more hate groups than we've ever had. Statistics shows it from the JDL on down. We have more hate groups on, look at the college campuses. We ain't talking about ballots, just hate groups, period. So you know, you want to embrace, you want to make sure you have teachable moments, but you also want to be aware.
Not everybody's going to be.
There's no teachable moment or.
You just gotta know who they are.
You gotta know who you, you embrace.
Here's, and, and you're not wrong, and, and, and you're right, there is a unfortunate spike in anti-Semitic incidents and Islamophobia and racial incidents. And, and, and a lot of that is because of the fact that the demographics of this country is rapidly changing.
Sure.
More people of color are, are coming into the country. And there's some people who take that as an opportunity to play on people's emotions.
That's what it is.
And their weakness.
Fan the fire.
And, and, and so that's where we stand, as they say, in the gap. The NAACP's job is to, first of all, let people know that we do better when everybody's involved.
Of course.
And we do better when everybody participates and everybody feels a part of, of, of this country. And our voice has to outweigh the voices of hate. And, and, and I was thinking about this, Elvin, I think we all realize this. If you look back to what this country's been through in the last couple of years.
That's right.
We lost over a million people to COVID. That is a major, major issue.
Nobody talks about that.
Nobody talks about it, even in my district, same thing in your district. We had people who actually died, got COVID and died. And that's not theoretical, that's not political, that's, that's real. And, and still, as Dr. Cooperini, our other contributor, medical contributor says, still today, right now, there's 300 people a day dying from COVID. In addition to all the other things that we've been through. In addition, look, we just, I'm getting ready to do, on May 25th, Kristen and Council President knows, once he attends, we do a tribute to George Floyd, the fact that he got, he was murdered on May 25th, 2020. And we just bring people together and, and, and reflect on that. But that was a tremendous traumatic experience for our country. To see a person actually get killed.
Sacrifice right and live.
Live. So my point is, what's my point? My point is that those of us in civil rights and social justice, health equity, even though you're health equity, you in civil rights and social justice, because the right to have healthcare is a civil right.
Absolutely.
And the right, if that's denied, that's a social injustice. I remember the lady said yesterday, President, in, in Kristen's meeting, the lady, I forget her name, but she was from the group. She said that a lady who happened to be white, her husband happened to be African-American. The lady went to a medical facility and reported her symptoms and they gave her medical referrals and all that. Her husband went separately to the same medical facility and didn't get the same treatment.
Well, Charles Drew, you ever heard of Charles Drew?
Yeah.
Blood plasma.
Yeah.
Car accident. How did he die? Lack of blood.
Yeah.
Remember that?
But he's the main one we're talking about with blood trials.
There you go. So a lot of people are not aware of this, you know what I mean? And they need to be. So that's why sometimes I have to shoot it right on and then let you know. I always know what I'm talking about. You know, I study. I know where I come from. I know where we should be. We haven't gotten there yet, but I see they're trying to turn back the hands of time. We can't have that.
That's why our theme is standing for and protecting the liver.
That's it.
And, and like I said, when we first said that way back in, I think it was before the holidays, but now we see the.
You see it.
See it right here. So we're going to, again, let me make that announcement. For those of you who aren't able to make it Saturday, April 27th, this Saturday, Hard Rock to the Freedom Fund, to see the council president's, going to get the president's award. And Kristen is going to present the health awards to Dr. Mamadou and Dr. Cooperini. We thank him for, for that. But there are people who want to donate and can. I'm not donating. They want to attend and they can. So we want them to donate. So please send your contributions to BO Box 1182, Abseka, New Jersey. We'd be happy to receive that. And we're going to still partner with, with Kristen on this health issue.
Yes.
This is a critical issue. Let me answer another question, Kristen. You talked about the, the health pledge. And I remember from a meeting you had, that the manager of the health pledge said, if my memory serves me correct, that there was a 12-year gap in life expectancy with people lived in Atlantic City and people in the county. How do we address that?
So that's.
Is my memory correct?
Yeah, and that's actually one of our strategic goals with Vision 2030 is to increase life expectancy by five years in Atlantic City. One is we have to get people to the doctor. We can't delay someone who is, so we had something on colorectal screening a couple of weeks ago. The screening age for that is 45. We can't get you there at 65 and then it's too late. It, it's just, and we can't allow that to happen because you're afraid to find out. We gotta change the narrative of that. So one is the education. The other piece is access, right? You know, we need to make sure that, we can't tell people to go to the doctor and then when they call the doctor, they can't get an appointment for six months. And then, then six months, we lose them because they're like, you know what, it wasn't meant to be. And so now we, we lost one prematurely. And then the other piece, and, and this may sound maybe not related, but it does correlate, is workforce development. We gotta get people jobs that are going to allow them to be paid a healthy wage and good healthcare insurance. We also need to make sure that we're addressing the social determinants of health. So we can't just see somebody in the hospital and say, oh, you're better. And then we don't address the fact that they don't have food, they don't have stable housing, they don't have transportation to get to their followers. So all of these things play into, I call it the circle of life, of, you know, the, the tenants of true healthcare. And that's how we'll increase the longevity of people's lives. Now, Ms. Fudge, our former Secretary of HUD. She came for the National NAACP Convention at the Convention Center in Atlantic City a couple of years ago. And she said this, she said, do you know that your zip code determines your life expectancy? And I don't think it takes, no disrespect to rocket scientists, but I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to see that there's a difference in expectancy of life in different communities, zip codes. Our job is to make sure that everyone is on an equitable playing field. Not equal, but equitable, meaning everyone's treated fairly so they have access to the same resources so that our children and their children's children have the ability to grow and thrive and not necessarily.
And, and you know, you break it down to as low as common denominator, Kalim and myself, we always send letters to peoples, we have to have a few, make sure, because they're part of our community. So we scan the obituaries every day and you see the ages. Whites, 90, 89, even some as high as 100. I just looked in the paper the other day, we just buried a young man, 39 years old.
My grandfather died at 49 years old. My grandfather.
Well, we talked about the kid before, the gentleman in Black Panther. He was what, 43?
43, colorectal cancer, you know? And still we have people who not getting a colonoscopy at 45. Now, it was funny, we did have a colorectal screening event and shout out to all the community members that came out. But one of the questions was, listen, when can I stop getting these?
Do for one every five years, whatever it is, whatever I'm doing.
But we gotta create a condition where I call our community where we are screening for these things. And you know, this work being done, even with sickle cell, you know, I'm still on that, working with some hematologists on how do we get educational on sickle cell? Because that's something that really impacts our community. But overall, I'll, I'll say this, I'm done. I was talking to a doctor.
Keep going, this is important.
I was talking to a doctor friend of mine who's of East, Eastern Asian descent. And I asked him in front of these high school kids, why did you become a doctor? Now, I was expecting an answer like, oh, I always wanted to be a doctor. I wanted to make money, all these things. He said, I looked at my family and I said, we suffer with a disease and nobody in our family is a doctor. So I'm going to be that person. So when my family gets sick, they don't have to wait on anyone. I am their direct access. And I thought about that. In our communities, we need to have the same fortitude of, let's not send our kids off to college to be liberal arts majors with no purpose. Tell them what the need is so we can create a community that has exactly what it needs. We call it alchemy, taking what you have to produce what you need. So we also, as adults and as people who say we love the community, to make sure our kids are going to school for things that the community needs before they go off to California and North Carolina and Atlanta to be what that community needs with our community suffering. And I can talk about that with Dr. Henry Louis Gates, who opened up my mind in college when he went to a prison and asked this brother, why are you in prison? And this man articulately said, I'm in prison because while my colleagues that don't look like me saw a fireman, a lawyer, a police officer, all I saw was someone who wasn't taking care of the community. And I became what I saw. And so we gotta also own the responsibility, let's not just get excited for our kids getting accepted to college. Let's give them a plan and say, you need to be this. And we talk about the other communities that do this and it's successful. And they, they tell me this all the time. We gotta be just as adamant as well. But we gotta create those spaces for them as well too. So that's why shame was plugged. Atlantic Care, we're launched that we're bringing a medical school to Atlantic City in partnership with Trexon University. And I'm hoping that that will stir up some more diversity in medicine as well.
That's important.
That's it.
And, and, and you are to, you are the health counterpart to the council president. The council president comes here every week and talks about voter registration, voter awareness, voter involvement. That's important. We have to keep pushing that. And we need you to keep talking about health disparity, health education, health environment, health equity and health involvement. We need to keep pushing, just like the council president and us want people to be registered to vote. We need people to have a primary doctor to know why that's important, to know their family history. To, and, and we had Dr. Regis talking about that, about weight loss and diet. We want to get back on that because there's some things that are hereditary and you can't do that much about. But there's some things that you can impact, that impact our health. Tell us about that.
Well, I mean, first of all, it's your diet, right? A lot of the disease states that particularly people of color are dying from prematurely is all about diet, right? I just saw something, since we were talking about colorectal cancer, you know, they tell you that's one of the key factors, red meat, alcohol. All of these things that you're doing in excess.
Say that again.
Red meat, alcohol, smoking. Smoking. Of course, there's the, you know, the genetic piece, you know, the hereditary piece to it all. But think about this, the other, one of the things that can save your life from these disease states is also knowing your family history and understanding that hereditary upbringing there. And so, but I always think about this and I'm not trying to be funny, but we always, we allow the. but we always, we allow the media and rappers and they talk about single-family homes or no. But what I see is if, I don't know who my father is, who am I to get the information from? Hey, you may have suffered with prostate cancer. You may have suffered with
Diabetes.
Diabetes. I need to know these things because this is how I'm gonna be able to attack it early. Uh that's why we're seeing more kids juvenile diabetes because we're not addressing these things at the forefront. Uh but it takes cultural competency as well, right? And I think the other onus is on the doctors and providers. If I'm a provider, I need to understand that, hey, I may be dealing with a patient who, you know, it may not have had the same upbringing as I had. So I'm not gonna put expectations on them that pretty much are outside of their purview. I'm gonna educate them on, hey, you may not have had this information, but I need you to know, if you wanna secure longevity, I need you to change your diet. I need you to do this. I need you to, and I need you to talk to your kids about this as well.
Well, and and that works, education works, cause I can remember uh that when smoking was a big thing. People smoked in the movies, people smoked in the street. People used to smoke on the bus.
Yeah.
Uh a big shout out to Senator Lortberg, a blessed memory, who passed the legislation. That's why voting is important.
That's right.
Senator Lortberg was an elected official.
Yes.
He passed the legislation to stop smoking in in public places and theaters and bars and restaurants. And people said it was gonna be the end of the world. It wasn't.
No.
So so and and we can see people aren't even smoking movies and TV anymore.
You used to smoke on a plane and win the casinos. You could smoke in the cafeteria. You know, you can add years to your life. I used to be a smoker. I haven't had a cigarette in over twenties, about twenty-six years.
Mm-hmm.
And I I used to be a drinker. I haven't had a drink in thirty-three years because I took the time to say, you know what, if I wanna live longer, I have to do certain things to benefit me.
Let me just pee on uh the uh part of Atlantic Care's uh future in terms of lifting up the uh closing, not lifting up, closing the gap in life expectancy. You said five years?
Mm-hmm.
For over what period of time?
So five, twenty-thirty, so six years, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-thirty.
Okay.
So we are working for the next year, six years
Right.
to create interventions that's gonna increase the life expectancy by five years.
People living in Atlantic City.
People living in Atlantic City. Because you, and it trickles down to other communities too, right?
Right, right.
Um just, you know, so funny, cause I'm always like, man, people love the name of Atlantic City. I saw a car dealership that's not in Atlantic City. It's in Atlantic City.
Right, right, right.
That's a great thing.
Yeah.
But we wanna increase the life expectancy expectancy by five years. And you don't know, someone says, that don't seem like a long time, but think about what you could do for five years.
That's a long time.
That's five years more that you can leave a generational wealth to your children. Five years that you can go back to school and leave something. Five years that you have with family. And so uh Atlantic Care is creating interventions around social determinants of health, around housing, around transportation, around workforce that we can ensure that we are adding to people's lives versus taking from it.
That's important. Uh you've been listening to Kristen Raglin, uh associate, Assistant Vice President of Diversity Equity Inclusion in Atlantic Care and of course uh Council President, uh Aaron Sporty Randall, uh the Council President in Atlantic City and the First Ward Representative in Atlantic City. Kristen, before we close out, we're ending in the last four minutes. You have any, anything to say in your day?
Uh actually, yes.
Actually, yes.
I
Kristen, our engineer.
Real quick, um I was kinda chomping at the bit when we first started talking about um
I saw the way your glasses were twitching.
Basically what you do and um you know, why it's important to have a conversation. I'll be honest with you, until you came on the scene, there were things that as far as diversity, equity and inclusion that I didn't think of. And I'm sure that um some of our we we kinda just get in a way where it's like we, we're used to things being done the way that they're being done. But from a healthcare aspect, okay, so we know the infant mortality rates and things like that, but we don't always really think about why Kristen's job is important, why it's important to have somebody there that is thinking about these things in every and not just for, because for me, that makes sense to me. But there are things that he does that are, they may not necessarily affect me personally, but when it comes to um, you know, um gender identity and things like that, there are things that he's doing for other communities that are important to that community. So I like I said, when it, it wasn't until he came on the scene that I was kinda like, duh, why would we not? You know what I mean? So yes, the uh it is, it is very important just for us to continue to have the conversation and to enlighten people on, you know, why those positions, uh why diversity, equity and inclusion is important.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that because like even, I do a lot of work with veterans, right? A lot of people don't forget, these are protected uh classes, right? So I work a lot with VA. The VA will get people what they need. Um you know, it's a, diversity has many dimensions, but I'll say it this way, Dr. King said it better than anybody could say it. What affects you directly also affects me indirectly. That's the interrelated structure of reality. I can't be what I ought to be until you are what you ought to be. And that's how I look at D E and I.
Okay, uh thank you so much. Uh and uh one of the ways that we are are spreading our word, our good friends at uh start saying reliance, not reliance.
Ideal?
Ideal.
Ideal.
Thank you, ideal. Ideal Institute, Ideal Institute. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh uh for being here, Ideal Institute, uh so that we can expand uh what we adorn, expand our audience, expand our reach.
Yes.
Very, very important topics. Council President, thirty seconds, last minute, last
Thirty seconds, V O T E. That's what you need to do. V O T E. That's what you need to do.
Kristen Raglin, thirty seconds.
Go to the doctor.
And we can put that on a bumper sticker, vote and go to the doctor. We we appreciate that. Uh thank you so much both of you. Kristen, also thank you for for your comment.
Yes.
I knew Kristen was ready to go. I saw her glasses. But uh this is important uh information, in all seriousness. This is really lifesaving information.
Lifesaving.
Uh voting is lifesaving.
Lifesaving.
At at the governmental political level, but what Kristen is talking about every day is lifesaving. We can get people to change their lifestyle, to stop smoking, stop drinking, to to eat better, to uh eat uh more healthy. We can do something uh with uh with our uh community, in every community. And I'll say this, in in closing, if we can increase the educational level, the health level of Atlantic City, that will bring the whole region up.
Absolutely.
So so it's not it just that we are so concerned about Atlantic City, we're concerned about everybody.
Everyone.
And and if you bring the least of us up, not in the human status, we're all human, but in terms of uh the twelve-year lifespan, when she said that, that really got to me. When she said there was a twelve-year difference, and it's it's the same, I got a friend of mine in Philly and they have a graph they put in the Inquirer. And they said, as you go from West Philly to uh outskirts of Philly, each zip code, the life expectancy changes.
Yeah, let's, we're not gonna talk about the violence aspect of that.
Yeah.
Like, that's a whole different, I mean, unfortunately, I lost two two Penn State classmates last week in Philly to gun violence.
Is that right?
Two classmates, thirty-nine, thirty years old.
Wow.
So it's not all health, there's some things that we need to address.
We're gonna have to talk about that because violence is a public health issue.
That's it, definitely.
And and we have to talk about that. Uh you've been listening to uh your NAACP speak, so our special guest, Kristen Raglin from the uh Atlantic Care. Vice President for Diversity Equity Inclusion, of course, our regular contributor, Aaron Sporty Randall, Council President, City of Atlantic City. Winner on April twenty-seventh with the President's Award for his work in government and the esteemed Kristen, who is our engineer and chief adult, young adult commentator. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. When we fight, we win. When we fight, we win. When we fight, we always win. See you next week.